Hello. I would just like to call to order the City Council's study session meeting for August 1, 2016. The City Council will be in executive session for 30 minutes to discuss a matter related to property acquisition. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. As noted by Councilmember Slatter at the top of the hour, council's been meeting executive session discussing one matter related to property acquisition. We will now proceed with the first of our two study session items, item 2A on our agenda. City Manager, please introduce the topic.
Mayor and councilmembers, that first topic is the Eastside Men's Shelter in Supportive Housing project. And just by way of background, one of the 2016-17 council priorities is to establish an eastside permanent winter homeless shelter. And in partnership with King County, the Seattle-King County Public Health Site located in Eastgate was identified as a potential site for the shelter. This evening's staff will describe the promising partnership between the city, King County, and our community partners, Congregations for the Homeless and Imagine Housing, to develop and operate the shelter. This evening's staff seeks council direction on entering into a non-binding letter agreement with King County to further evaluate siting the men's shelter at the Eastgate site. So joining us this evening are a number of our staff, Cameron Parker, the project manager from the Parks and Community Services Department, Dan Stor, our planning director, and our Neighborhood Outreach Program Manager, Mike McCormick-Huttleman. And with that, I am turning it over to Cameron. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm going to jump to the end first and give away the ending. We are here to ask the council tonight for direction on entering into a letter of understanding with King County to further evaluate locating a men's shelter with permanent supportive housing here in Bellevue. So while Dan, Mike, and I have the pleasure of getting to present this project and the progress that we've made so far, there are many other people here with us this evening that have had a hand in that, and I'll point out a few. We do have Steve Roberts here tonight with Congregations for the Homeless, as well as Sybil Glasby with Imagine Housing. So we asked them to sit right there in the front row, just in case you have questions for them later in the presentation. We also have Arthur Sullivan with Arch, who has worked for a long time on the Arch side of the housing and funding element. And Emily Leslie, our Bellevue Human Services Manager. And also lots of members of the community as well. So did also want to recognize assistance that we've received from Bellevue Police on this project so far. And they've been very helpful and supportive in helping us get our arms around the issue that we're dealing with here. So the policy basis here is strong, and it's one that has been set by the council in several actions over the past couple of years. City Manager Miyake referenced the most recent council vision priority was also, this project was included in the two-year priorities for the cycle just before this council vision from the original 2014 council vision. So it's been on the list for a long time for the City Council. There are also new, strong policies in the updated comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2015 in both the housing element and the human services element. Housing Policy 36 talks specifically about collaborating with other jurisdictions and social service organizations to assure availability of emergency shelter and day centers that address homelessness. And further, there was an action item included by the council in the 2014 Bellevue Diversity Advantage Action Plan that supported the creating a year-round shelter here in Bellevue. The -- some of the background we're dealing with here, with some statistics that you may have heard before. One of the reasons why this issue has garnered so much of the council's attention over the past couple of years is a significant rise in prevalence and visibility of homelessness here in Bellevue and on the east side. And it's evidence in all parts of the city. It's evidence in vans and RVs camping on the sides of roads, in tents that you see in green belt areas, at libraries, and at shopping centers across town. And over 1,200 people were served in eastside shelters last year. And specifically for men, for whom our shelter will focus, there were 78 men in year-round shelter and 571 in winter shelter, just within the past year. And so those are folks that have found shelter. In addition to that, 245 people were found this past, early in the winter of this year, sleeping outside, unsheltered, on the east side. So the overall goal of the homelessness initiative here and in King County is to make homelessness rare, brief, in one time. And Bellevue's support for prevention programs has remained an important part of our approach. But yet, there are still individuals who need to get out of the elements on a regular Over time, Bellevue's response to homelessness has been largely community-driven. The city is fortunate to have several nonprofit agencies who have made this their work, including Congress for the Homeless, Hope Link, Friends of Youth, and others that have been working for a long time, with the support of the city's Human Services Fund and other funders in the community. And the city has a long, long time spent in working with King County and the region in the All Home King County Initiative, going back to the very earliest days of that initiative. And a big part of that is collaboration with our neighboring cities, as we do with a lot of different human services issues. For this project and talking about homeless shelters, the approach is similar. We've been working closely with Kirkland and Redmond and Issaquah to come up with an approach that recognizes the regional nature of homelessness and shares in how we approach providing shelter. So for Bellevue, that means looking at providing shelter for single adult men. In Kirkland, they are working on a project to provide shelter for women and families. And Redmond is hosting a current shelter that's designed to serve young adults. Winter shelter is also not something new here in Bellevue. We have had a winter shelter for several years. It has rotated every few years among different spots in town, in crossroads in northeast Bellevue, and most recently in Belred. So the intent of coming up with a permanent facility is so that the shelter for men can be in a space that's designed specifically for the use in an area that's most conducive to the use. The program for this proposed shelter includes an emergency shelter space with approximately 100 beds. It would also include a drop-in day center and a cafeteria for individuals to use during the day. And both of those would be matched with services available onsite, including case management, employment support, medical and health services, and other services as well. That would all be available within the same facility there. Matched with that would be service-enriched permanent housing that would conceivably be constructed on top and within the same facility. We have taken time to look in the area and across the nation at best practice examples. Just brought a few images of one example that we visited. It's a nativity house. It's a Catholic Community Services Project in Tacoma. The shelter, the program is similar in nature to what we're looking at here in Bellevue. The scale is somewhat bigger. You can see how the emergency shelter in the image on the upper left provides individual spaces for the shelter beds. Each of those areas includes a shelf and an outlet for the individuals to use during their stay there, as well as the open day center area for folks to use during the day and for meals. And then what's pictured on the bottom is the housing portion of the site, which is aligned with the sidewalk frontage. That is also a permanent supportive housing model, like similar to what we're considering for this project. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dan, who's going to talk a little bit more specific, more specific details about the candidate site.
Okay. Well, thanks, Cameron. Good evening, councilmembers. This opportunity to create a permanent shelter as the council priority called out for has been something we have been aware of for a while, and we're, in that light, quite excited when this particular opportunity emerged at this site. This is the King County Public Health Site in the Eastgate subarea. And here we are just north of I-90. We're looking at 142nd there as it heads north. And on the left side is the King County Park and Ride. On the right side, is there a laser on there? On the right side is this building here. This building here, which is the King County Public Health Building. So it's an existing building here on a large site. It's on about a 4.3-acre site. And this is the subject site that we're discussing tonight, this 4.3-acre site. It goes up against the hillside behind Bellevue College, which is above it, here in the Eastgate subarea. Very, very interesting site because it has many of the characteristics that we thought actually were a prime location for siting a permanent shelter, a place that actually has great transit service because it's next to the largest park and ride in the whole county. And so it'll have permanent transit service there for pretty much forever. And really ideally, it has supportive services right on the site. We thought if we were lucky, we'd find a place that had supportive services nearby. This has supportive services right on the site because there's medical and dental clinics that serve many homeless clients that are actually in this building operated by King County Public Health. So the transit location here, the access to services, and then the future of this area being in the -- this is part of the area that we've been working on. Last year, the council actually adopted comprehensive plan amendments to create a transit-oriented development plan designation for this area. And so it's part of a larger node next to the park and ride here that would be activated for this type of mixed-use activity that would be a mix of housing and other activities that would occur along it, transit-supportive, pedestrian-walkable. So in some ways, it's a really good fit in terms of the future that is envisioned for this area as adopted into the comp plan last year. And this was based on the Eastgate-I-90 CAC committee process that a few years ago Mayor Stokes was part of. So this site has many, many facets that make it really uniquely suited for a homeless shelter. Moving on to a closer look at the site itself. The shaded area that you see there is the site. And again, it's about 4.3 acres. You can see the topography heading up the hillside here with Bellevue College above it. It's the components of the project, as Cameron mentioned, would be to co-locate on this site the shelter itself, which would have beds for overnight use, a day-use facility, supportive services that would actually help, such as counseling, employment services, and so forth. That would be really a part of what you'd be offering the homeless clients on the site. Some offices for the nonprofits that are actually providing some of those services. And then, of course, on the site, you've got the medical and dental clinic services that are provided by King County Public Health. Also, as part of the development here is the potential for permanent supportive housing. This is something that we've talked with the county about. The county's very interested in not just a shelter here, but also permanent supportive housing that would be also serving homeless clients. We think that actually would make a stronger project. So it's not just a shelter and day services, but also that permanent housing component. So those are all the various elements of the project. There are two places it could fit on the site. They're both complicated. Nothing's ever super simple. The south pad here, you'd basically be building on top of what's the existing surface parking serving the facility now. So you'd have to replace that parking, and you'd really have to structure a lot of that parking to be able to build on that south pad. The north pad, which is another location you could build in here, has its own issues around, you're actually excavating some into the hillside and building up that slope, similar to the Toyota garage that was built just east of here as part of that development. So there are two possible locations here where you could add on this site. And that's what we'll need to investigate further, the costs and how that would be done. And then the other element that is really, really important is you'd have to look at how this is done in such a way as to maintain and advance the transit-oriented development, the TOD direction that we're trying to take this particular area. So you need to have the pedestrian connectivity here through the site into the park and ride that lies over here. You'd have to develop this in such a way that it really does meet the intent of this transit-oriented development node. We think there are many ways to accomplish that and carry out the program as envisioned on the site. I think the point of this slide is just to say that in a project like this, there are a lot of funding complications. It's going to require funding from a lot of different sources. There's an initial infusion of Arch funding that was made in 2015, about a half million dollars. We would anticipate additional Arch funding being requested as part of this project. There is $1.4 million we appreciate already set aside for the project in the state capital budget earlier this year. And there'll be a lot of other funding requests that'll need to go into the project of this magnitude, from the state, from the county. Ultimately, with the supportive housing piece, the permanent housing piece, looking for federal tax credits as part of it, and a private fundraising campaign that we anticipate being led by Congregations for the Homeless. As Cameron was saying, I think we're very fortunate to have the kind of local partners in a project like this, and not only just having the county as a partner, but also having Congregations for the Homeless, which is very much a homegrown nonprofit organization here that emerged from concerns in our community about serving the homeless and dealing with this issue that we have, as well as Imagine Housing, which is also a local organization that sprouted up because of concerns that the local community had about dealing with affordable housing and homelessness. So we're very fortunate to have some of those. When we think about a private capital campaign, there's some strong organizations that will be able to help move that forward. So this brings us to the letter of agreement, which is really the focus of tonight and the focus of what we're asking council for direction on. We have drafted with King County the exhibit in the packet that is really about pursuing this potential partnership with the county. It starts out by recognizing a number of mutual interests that the city and the county have. The county's proclamation of emergency because of the issue of homelessness is called out here. The county and the city both recognizing that we need additional efforts to provide shelter and housing for homelessness, homeless families and individuals. Calling out the interest that Bellevue and the Arch cities have had in working together to address homelessness and the work that's been advancing on that front. And ultimately concluding in the recitals that we'd be interested in developing a partnership with the county and the city, working together to accommodate a shelter, supportive services, and permanent supportive housing on this site. So that's kind of the intent and the recognition of the potential in this, this set of mutual interests leading to a partnership as proposed here. On the second page, it gets into some specifics of what would be involved in moving forward. It has us actually looking to continue processing the Eastgate-I-90 plan, the comp plan, the comprehensive plan amendments from that are already adopted. So we're moving forward now with land use code amendments on that. It has us working to negotiate an agreement for the use of the property for this purpose, these purposes really, the shelter, the permanent supportive housing, and the services here. It has a call-out about the size of the project, being big enough to be eligible for federal tax credits. And it calls out for us being really the lead between the city and Arch and putting together the detailed funding plan that addresses the complexities of funding that I touched on a moment ago. So those are the key parameters of this joint letter of agreement. Very important to point out is this is really the start of a process. This by no means is a commitment to any kind of final decision on whether this site ultimately is the one. But there's no rights or obligations created by this agreement. But it's the start of that process, and it certainly shows an intent to work together to see if this project makes sense at this location with all the potential upsides and advantages of the co-location. So with that, this start of the process will lead to, if the council gives the green light tonight, it'll lead to a public process to speak with the community about some of the issues that may be needed to work through as we would design and operate such a facility. And Mike McCormick-Huttleman, our Neighborhood Outreach Manager, is going to touch briefly on that.
Thank you. Good to be here, Mayor, councilmembers. This is going to be a fun one. One of the things that's key in doing community outreach around the Eastside Men's Shelter and Supportive Housing is to understand, one, it's a partnership of five agencies. So it's partnership with King County. Want to especially call out Public Health with Seattle and King County because they're onsite, it's on their parcel, and they're key partners in this. It's also a partnership with Congregations for the Homeless, who've agreed to do the outreach with us. And so we're going to be walking hand in hand together in the outreach through this component, as well as with Imagine Housing in terms of the supportive housing piece. We realize that you don't want to surprise the community with stuff like this. And so we want to be able to listen both to people's concerns, as well as the things that are going to surprise us in terms of the partnership opportunities that exist around in the area. The community has a lot invested in doing this and doing this well. And so having a robust outreach process hopefully will get us some insight as to how to do that. We're beginning now with outreach with surrounding businesses and residents, kind of in concentric circles around the site. And so we're going to be doing that through September, or through August. And we have a website up as well, and we're going to be doing stakeholder briefings through August. We want to come back in September for a community meeting, also to continue to solicit further input and do outreach, especially as folks are going to be back from vacations. We want to make sure that we can wrap people in and get people up to speed and get further input, and hopefully bring all of that back together to you by the end of the year, first quarter 2017 at the latest, both with what we've heard, as well as some of the ways that we've taken into consideration what people have said and are responding to those concerns and partnership opportunities. One of the things that Congregations for the Homeless wants to do is they've decided they want to create a community stakeholder group that would be an ongoing advisory group for them, both in terms of the facility design, as well as the program operations with the immediate stakeholders that surround them, because they're looking to kind of institutionalize community support with them as partners for the ongoing operations of the site and be able to be responsive to what they're hearing as things move and develop. You know, this is a process that's the beginning of something that hopefully will be operational by winter 2019. So we're not necessarily starting a shelter tomorrow at this location, but we do want to have a robust conversation about how to plan for that well, how to be able, as a community, to come together and cite this well, and yet understand where everybody's coming from to make it the best thing for the community. So that's our plan for community outreach.
One more clip there. So just to summarize our next steps, and then we'll open up for questions. Should we move forward with the letter of agreement? Then, based on your council direction here this evening, we have a big package of work to do with King County and their staff there. And I do appreciate King County Councilmember Valucci joining us here this evening for that. We'll have many steps ahead to really dig in and see if this site is going to work for this project. The community engagement, as Mike mentioned, will go full steam ahead here between now and the end of the year. Congregations for the Homeless has grant applications already drafted that they're planning to submit within the next few months. And all of those partners will really take the time to do the work and the conversations and dialogues with the neighborhood to see if this site has merit for the project.
So it's basically a six-month process, right? Coming back sometime in the quarter of 2017?
So the, all of the terms within the letter of understanding have a six-month timeframe. The end result would be a decision on the property conveyance on behalf of King County that would take place sometime in the first quarter of next year.
Just one other quick thing, if you'd just, just as sinister to put this in context for the, for the public. This is a culmination of a fairly lengthy and comprehensive look all around the city for places, correct? And this is, I mean, we've looked at a lot of different areas, so it's not just this one. And this is the one that seems to fit the criteria, which is why we're going forward with the exploration.
There was, right, a study of publicly-owned properties. We had a sort of a list of criteria that were of interest in studying different sites. And this is the site that was determined had the most promise for further evaluation.
Okay. All right. So any questions? We need, you know, what, the ask is to enter into this non-binding letter of agreement with King County. So John, you want to start off?
You know, I don't have any, any specific questions about this. This is something that has been on the council's, really, to find a location for this has been at the top of our list of priorities for the city. It is an extremely important aspect of our approach to dealing with homelessness. There are, I think while there's no, I think we really do need to go into this with everybody with eyes open. with eyes open and what has been done. And we did do an extensive look at where this could be located. This is really, this rose very much to the top of the list of areas of a site where it can be located because of a number of different things. One is this can be co-located with people who deal with problems of homelessness with the health district. That's an extremely important aspect of this. Second, it is near good public transportation. We know that in attempting to deal with the issues of homelessness, access through public transportation is important. The third is, this is in an area that is growing, that is slated for more growth, that is part of our comprehensive plan, and this can be integrated into it rather than simply attempting to drop something in to a different place. What really wasn't mentioned tonight is, and this is something that we will really want to hear from the public, and that is the operational nature of how this will work. And we don't have the answer to that tonight, because we do want to hear from the public. The operations of how this system will work, we need to also understand how our cities and the public needs to understand how our systems, whether that's human services, parks, police, neighborhood outreach, all of these work together, and find, and also how this works with our East Side partners in this. And finally, there may very well be, as we move through this, policy decisions that the city council has to make. This has to be a balance between serving the homelessness and serving our public. And most important, this is a way to move people out of homelessness, to meet what is in our comprehensive plan, to be, you know, one-time, brief, and to move people from homelessness. This is an East Side solution to an East Side issue. And I think that's the most important thing that I can say about this. We're moving forward with our cities together from the East Side. Redmond is taking a shelter. Kirkland is taking shelter. Issaquah is taking shelter. Many neighborhoods throughout this community in Bellevue already take shelter, and people living here don't even know that that shelter is going on. There are others that come in, and we see them very obviously. One of those is a tent city. Unless we find real solutions to homelessness, you don't eliminate the potential of having tent cities. And I think that that is something that ought to be a goal of this. So, that's a long way of saying it is, this is not an either-or. Should the city do this or not? Should the East Side do this or not? This is a must-do. And we're going to hear from a lot of people who are not going to like a site. They're going to have issues, they're going to have fears, and we have to address those. We can't just say to people, "That's not important." We do have to address those fears. We do have to do it in a way that's constitutional, and I am absolutely certain that we will. We have called this a winter shelter. It's interesting because this has grown from a shelter that was open only on winter nights that dropped below a certain temperature. And I think it was actually more than just below freezing when it originally began. It's no longer a winter shelter. It's a six-month shelter. It does not have a permanent home, so we have to find that permanent home. And the ability to have a permanent home, to combine that with serviced individuals, to combine that with permanent supportive housing, to combine that with the opportunity of really great East Side communities working on this issue in the East Side, I think says a lot for the way we do business over here. So, that is a very long speech. I apologize.
Leah?
Thank you. Yeah, I was on the Parks Board when we initially decided to put the first homeless shelter at Men's. Well, I don't know if it was just men, but the emergency winter homeless shelter at Crossroads, and we were astounded at how many people flocked to that. You know, you've got to remember, these people are part of our community, you know? They are here, living amongst us, and this is not charity. This is serving everybody in our community. And I think the site is excellent. It's near transit, services, education, retail. So, I'm very supportive of the site. Everything's walking distance. I do hope, and you kind of alluded to this, but I do hope that we see strong mental health support services offered to these individuals, that there's a work training program. Maybe we can partner with something like Salvation Army. They've done that so well. I'd like to see if we can partner with Bellevue College to find ways, if these people are interested in pursuing education, and also to offer community volunteer opportunities. I'm looking forward to moving forward with this letter, and thank you for your presentation.
I agree with some of the things that Councilmember Robinson and Councilmember Schelmanak said about, particularly about how the, how a shelter should be structured with regard to services, with regard to transit, with regard to, you know, having permanent housing on-site. I think that's really, really important. I do have some questions, however. And one of the things that Mayor Stokes raised about how we, the city has been looking at sites, I think for about a year, and there were several that we looked at, and the city honed in on this one. However, one of the ones that, where the new winter shelter is going to be temporarily located at Lincoln Center, I do not believe was looked at. And so, while I am supportive of moving forward with the letter, I would like at least some analysis to the level that we had prior to be done on that site. So, that's number one. Number two is the East Gate I-90 land use code amendment. I know, excuse me, that that was on the Planning Commission's agenda just last week. And John, or Mayor Stokes talked about the CAC process, and I don't remember, I was liaison to the CAC, and I don't remember us ever discussing homeless shelter in that corridor. So, I'm wondering whether, in looking at the land use code for the East Gate I-90, whether the Planning Commission had a chance, since this has been percolating, to look at this in that corridor? And if not, why not? And, you know, would they have done things differently as far as the recommendation goes with that knowledge? So, that's my first question.
Let me try to address that. So, certainly, this site was not discussed by the Planning Commission or brought forward to the Planning Commission as a potential specific site, because we were under discussion with the county, and we certainly wouldn't take it to the Planning Commission before having this conversation with the council. So, we weren't in a position to actually roll it out at that time. The Planning Commission was aware that these kinds of locations that were transit-rich and service-rich were the kinds of things we're looking at in the East Gate corridor. And so, I understand there was some discussion there about permitting this as an administrative conditional use. So, today, if you were to cite the permanent shelter at this location, it would be a straight P in the box permitted.
Okay.
It wound up-
Oh, under today's code?
Under today's code.
Okay. That was going to be my follow-up question.
Planning Commission consideration, as I understand, the thought was, this is the kind of location where there's discussion about maybe this would be an appropriate kind of place for a shelter. And they made this kind of use at administrative conditional use, which is a more rigorous process than you go through than just, it's a P in the box, it's permitted outright. You have to go through an administrative process. But there's decision criteria, there's findings within that about being compatible with the vicinity and so forth that would have to be met. There's a public notice process. So, that was part of what the consideration, I think, was, but it wasn't about, we did not roll out the specifics of this, because that would not have been appropriate.
Okay. So, because are they done with their work on that?
They finished their work and have completed their recommendations last week.
Okay.
And those will be coming forward to the council in the fall to consider the East Gate. And then what they're doing is essentially moving forward with the code amendments pursuant to the Comp Plan, the Comprehensive Plan amendments that were made last year. So, truing those two up.
Okay. So, the, let's talk a little bit about outreach. The stakeholder briefings in August, I think they should continue well beyond August, because no one is around in August. So, I mean, people are just gone. Council's off, all of our boards and commissions are off. It's when people tend to not be paying attention to what's going on in the city. I think we should definitely do outreach, not just to the neighborhoods and to the local businesses, but to the property owners, especially the ones who are seeking to redevelop, because it may impact how they want to redevelop, as well as transit users in Bellevue College. I think we need to have very robust public outreach. I also would love to see, as this moves along, an evaluation on how locating a homeless shelter in this location would impact, if at all, realizing the development vision for the East Gate I-90 corridor. I know when we talked about having the permanent shelter up in the Spring District, it was, I was told that we were worried that it would impact the realizing the Belred vision. I'd like to know an analysis of that on East Gate I-90. And then I asked, I already wrote, I asked about the Lincoln Center site evaluation. But I think it's going to be really, really important that we do evaluation of this and full, full outreach to the public, because they need to have a full understanding and an ability to weigh in on this, if, when, how, et cetera. So, thank you. But I'm going to support the letter, because I think we need to-
And help in fundraising.
Continue working through it. What's that?
And helping the fundraising.
Yeah, I'll get my checkbook. Oops, there's nothing in it, and I just paid college tuition.
The voluntary thing. Bonner, go ahead.
A lot of really great things have been said that I agree with, and I do support this letter of agreement. I particularly would like to emphasize the fact that it is regional issues and regional groups and a number of partnerships. I think as we move forward with issues of homelessness and challenges that really don't just affect one city, but affect a region, that having partnerships is really important. And the fact that this is highlighting that, I think, is actually real credit to all of the different groups who are involved, and I certainly thank them for coming together. I would say that I completely agree with the outreach, the fact that it should be somewhat extended if possible. And I would also, I suspect you're doing this already, but also adding some kind of online type of outreach that might be of some value, or surveys of some kind, so that you at least get access if people can actually make it to a meeting. It might be nice for them to be able to, be able to input. And sometimes that's how people get information and can kind of soak on it. Other than that, I think that this looks like the beginning of a conversation, and I think that's really important to highlight, that this is an agreement that allows there to be that type of discussion. I also fully support the service element. I think that's really important, if we can do that, because I think that there might be transitional opportunities and support that we can provide. So, I'd like just to emphasize that and support that. Thank you.
Kevin?
Definitely supportive of moving forward with the letter. My hope is that, you know, as we go through the process and venture into this new territory, that we maintain the great standards that we have in place for homelessness and what our goals are for addressing the issue of homelessness. I think they're right, and I hope they don't degrade at all as we go through the process. I'm really proud of the relationship we have and the services that Congregations for the Homeless provides and have provided for about a generation here on the East Side. I think they do a great job, and I'm really happy that they're involved in the process and hope that continues. And then I just ask, as we, as you go forward, to try to dive into the, what are the best practices for mitigating sites like this? I mean, it's a large site if you go out there, and it's kind of nice topographically how it's sort of set off from most places, but it's not set off from every place. And so, I think being realistic about the impacts that people and their surrounding properties will feel about this is important to be realistic about. And I think we've got a good opportunity to look for the mitigation options, ways to get the design right, so that people are safe and comfortable with the new use in that location. Otherwise, I support going forward with the agreement with King County.
Yeah, I think this, I mean, I agree with the, all the comments have been made, and I think, I think we have the opportunity to do something really extraordinary here in terms of housing and homelessness. And I think as Kevin said, we can do it in a way that really is compatible with the neighborhood and makes it a very, very nice site. I think that, I personally think, I mean, sure, it's not the thing that somebody's homeless and in certain straits, just looking for shelter, but if it can be an inviting place that fits in and makes them feel good about where they are, I think that's positive. And I think we can do that. I think we can do a really first-class homeless shelter, and that would be a very substantial thing to do. You know, as we said in the, on this memorandum, it's not, we're not being asked to predetermine a legislative outcome on the East Gate I-90 land use code update. We're not making a decision tonight on this. I think it is important, when we talk to the public, that we let the public know that this is the culmination of a long process to look around the whole city. It's not just throwing a dart at the map and picking this or thinking that for some reason. It was a very thoughtful process. There are always options, and it's six months, gives us a good time to go through this. I think it's, as we put up all the different people on the, of the board there that have been involved in this and working with King County and Arch and Imagine Housing, Public Health, and the others, as John said, all the other cities around it, working on this together. I think it's, again, a testament to our willingness to be collaborative and to work within the region and work on problems in a very positive way. So, this is an exciting night, and given that we have someone in the audience who has some connection with King County and who was instrumental in helping move things along here as we went, I would like to ask, if we could take the privilege and ask County Councilmember Claudia Valducci, if she would come up and say, I don't know, five or 10 words, as many as you want.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I swore to my staff that I wasn't going to speak tonight, so I have very little to say.
We won't tell them.
Well, I just, I want to thank you for the good discussion. I want to thank staff for all the work. I know King County staff and public health staff have also been very heavily engaged along with Congregations for the Homeless and others in getting us to this point, which is, which is a step along a long road, but it's a very important step, because I think now we can start to have this conversation publicly. And there's a lot of interesting issues. I was hearing just on Friday from the East Gate Public Health staff, who I went to visit, about some of their challenges within the clinic that they have today, and that they may need more space and they may need more staff in order to provide the level of services that we would hope we would have at this shelter. So, it's just, and that's just one category of issues. There's a number of them, which I think the letter of agreement enables us to move forward and try to identify all the issues and then figure out a path to resolving them. But we don't have a homeless shelter on the East Side. There's no permanent men's homeless shelter on the East Side, and most homeless people are men. And so, I really have a lot of respect for the city for moving forward, and I've always said, we're the big city, we need to take the big infrastructure, and this is part of being the, the big city on the East Side. It's about having the sorts of services and places for people who are in need, as well as for, you know, the great economic success stories that we see in downtown Bellevue and other places. So, thank you for letting me say a few words. I'm very excited to move forward with you. I commit to being a strong partner at the county council, and let's do it.
Okay.
All right. Thanks.
So, in your desk packet, there was agreement with a slight modification from what was sent around, so that would be what I would propose us to take action on. And I'd moved to authorize the city manager to enter into a non-binding lease, letter of agreement with King County to further evaluate citing a men's shelter and supportive permanent housing facility on property owned by King County adjacent to the East Gate Public Health Clinic and East Gate Park and Ride.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further comment? If not, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Good.
All right. And I want to congratulate everybody. We're 10 minutes shorter than what we had maybe allocated, so that's always good. All right. Yeah. Okay. The next item on our agenda is item 2B regarding a critical areas overlay update.
Mayor Stokes and councilmembers, just by way of background, Bellevue updated its comprehensive plan back in 2015, and the city's now- plan back in 2015, and the city's now required to update the development regulations to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and GMA. Specifically, the city's required to update our critical areas co-provision in order for us to retain our eligibility for state grant funding. Mike Brennan and Carol Helen are here with us today. Mike Brennan is the director of our Development Services Department, Carol Helen our land use director, and they're here to brief the council on this particular topic and the status of our critical areas update work. In particular, what we're asking the council for direction on tonight is drafting a critical areas code amendment that is narrowly tailored for the sole purpose of maintaining compliance of the city's development regulations with GMA, as well as finding it necessary for the city council to hold a public hearing in order to accomplish the mandated critical areas ordinance update as quickly as possible to maintain the city's ability to apply and maintain grants. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mike Brennan, the director.
Great, thank you, Mr. Miyaki. Good evening, Mayor Stokes, members of the city council. As Ms. Miyaki mentioned, we're here this evening to request that the council initiate the code amendment process to update the city's critical areas ordinance. I think Mr. Miyaki spoke to the specifics of the recommendations from staff to request that this be a narrowly focused update project to allow it to move forward very quickly to meet the necessary state requirements under our GMA obligations. We're also requesting that the council hold the public hearing, recognizing again that trying to keep this on a relatively fast track, that would be an efficient process, and noting that the city's planning commission is, got a pretty full docket as they're continuing to work through the downtown livability and our low-impact development regulation that is required to be updated prior to the end of the year, and also noting, as you heard from the last presenters, that they have just completed a significant amount of hard work on the East Gate plan. So the county, the planning commission is, has been a very busy bunch for the last number of months and will be as we move ahead. So again, requesting that the scope be narrow and that the council hold the public hearing to ensure that this can move along quickly. Carol will speak specifically to the, kind of the framework of the GMA and also to where we are with this update project and the timeline ahead. Carol?
Thank you. So tonight, staff is introducing the, essentially, the next step in the GMA update process that started in 2015. Jurisdictions planning under GMA are required to periodically review and update their comprehensive plans and the development regulations that implement those comprehensive plans. So, and this slide summarizes those GMA requirements. I do want to note that the RCW I quoted there is a little bit wrong. It's supposed to be 3670A130, and it describes our obligation to periodically update our comprehensive plan and development regulations. The review of the comprehensive plan occurred in 2015. You updated that in August of last year. You'll probably also recall that the Planning and Community Development staff undertook a review of the regulations for consistency with GMA, and you held a public hearing in April. And then in May, the council passed Resolution 9094 and found that the development regulations, predominantly contained in the land use code, were consistent with GMA with the exception of critical areas, where we had areas that we did need to update the code in order to be compliant. So, the rationale for updating the critical areas code and maintaining GMA compliance, I just wanted to spend a brief moment talking about that. State right, there's a statewide interest in us maintaining the GMA vision. We are committed to coordinated planning, and it ensures coordination and consistency between plans and neighboring jurisdictions. So as a result, we are asked to update our plans and development regulations every eight years, as are the cities in King County, Pierce County, and Snohomish County. We're all on the same cycle. That is fostering quality of life here for all Washingtonians and specifically in our county, where we're following up on countywide planning policies. And that's predominantly through the adoption of appropriate and meaningful land use measures, such as the critical areas code that protects our resources. So, requiring consistency of local critical areas regulations with GMA actually helps ensure that communities are protecting critical areas such as wetlands, stream resources, steep slopes, in a consistent manner statewide, and that we're essentially availing ourselves of the most current understanding of science. So, also, in order to, essentially, you could call this a carrot or a stick, but the state does use funding eligibility as a mechanism to encourage jurisdictions to meet their GMA consistency requirements. So it's important to note that this consistency requirement is real for us. We want to maintain our eligibility to receive funds from the state. Those predominantly come from the Public Works Assistance and Water Quality Accounts in the state treasury, so that's important to us in the funding of our projects that we do locally. To essentially update you on the status of Bellevue's CAO update, this was identified as something we would need to be working on this year, when the council updated its work program last year. We didn't know quite the scope of the, what the scope of the amendments would be until the comprehensive plan update was completed. Shortly after it was completed and the development regulation consistency analysis was done, we did hire a consultant, following your passage of the resolution, the critical areas update was necessary. That consultant is currently in the process of updating the best available science and existing conditions reports that were originally done as part of our critical areas adoption in 2006. So we're not starting over, we're using that as a foundational piece, and we're essentially updating it to current knowledge and understanding and looking at things like conditions that have changed since that time, or annexations, for instance, in East Gate and Hilltop. And then our consultant is doing a gap analysis to essentially compare the updated comprehensive plan, the updated best available science and existing conditions report, and those GMA requirements, to identify where we need to do amendments in our, where we may need to do amendments in our land use code. And working with the consultants, some preliminary examples of where we will need to do amendments include, for instance, consistency amendments with the comprehensive plan. Previously, our comprehensive plan did not identify critical aquifer recharge areas, and that will be an area that we will have to designate in our development regulations to describe what critical aquifer recharge areas are and whether there are any attendant regulations necessary beyond the state wellhead protection requirements. There are also consistency with agency guidance that's changed with respect to protection of critical areas. So for instance, stream and wetland resources are, the typing of those resources has changed by agency guidance, and so our code needs to be brought into compliance with those agency guidances. And there are other regulations, for instance, a little more modest, referencing to current publications on culvert reconstructions, changing the measurement of stream buffers. This is one area where actually there will be a benefit to property owners that live on ravines, because instead of measuring from the tops of slopes, we will be measuring from the ordinary high watermark, which will provide a reduced buffer in some regard. And we also, in Bellevue, originally had a very expanded list of species of local importance. Some of those species did not have management guidelines, so we are wanting to align our species list with the one that is adopted by the state and utilize the management guidelines that they have available for those wildlife species. And so that will mean that essentially the elimination of some of the species that we had previously regulated as protected. And then other is, like I noted before, there are some changes related to changes in existing conditions, such as the hilltop annexation. So, most of them are kind of, by this update, we are trying to, as Mike noted, narrowly tailor the code amendments that are necessary just to comply with state law and to essentially ensure that we retain our eligibility for grant funding. So, the next steps that we've identified is, over the course of the summer, once we get the best available science and gap analysis, which we expect over the next week or so, to draft the narrowly tailored code amendments that are necessary to ensure that we have updated our code consistent with state law. We'll be engaging in public outreach. To Councilmember Robertson's comment earlier, we'll certainly have some of that outreach over the summer, but we'll continue into September. We will be preparing a staff recommendation for the city council that will include the proposed code changes, and then we will do a presentation to the city council likely in September timeframe. The city council, we're asking you that you retain the responsibility for holding the public hearing, so that the, one, the planning commission has a very full docket. And in this case, because there are some very limited changes that just have to be made in order to respond very specifically to guidance under state law, there's a limited discretion that can be exercised by us in making the changes to these codes, so the opportunity for discussion and range of outcomes is pretty limited. And we are then asking that we adopt the required code amendments. The East Bellevue Community Council will be needed to have a public hearing on their own. They have to exercise their approval/disapproval jurisdiction over this amendment, because it is a citywide amendment. And then we will transmit that ordinance to Congress to demonstrate GMA compliance as soon as we're done, to ensure that our grant eligibility maintains intact, continues to be intact. So, the council action that we requested was summarized by city manager Miyaki and Mike Brennan, and we are asking that these code amendments be directed to be narrowly tailored and that the council find it necessary to retain authority over the public hearing. And we can answer any questions you may have.
Okay, Jennifer?
Thank you. So, I think there's two of us sitting here who worked on the first, the last CAO. It was a long process, very detailed. The, if I remember correctly, the SMP, which the council recommended approval and sent to Ecology about last year, right now, that is, the shoreline property is being controlled by the CAO that's in effect. I think we passed, until the new SMP is adopted. And so I'm wondering how, but once the SMP is adopted, then that will apply to shorelines and not the CAO. So how do you see this process and that dovetailing?
Sure. And we have talked to Ecology staff about that very question. Right now, you're correct that the shoreline, the critical areas code essentially governs the shoreline. It will continue to do that until the, until the new shoreline master program is adopted by Ecology, which we expect later this year, or is approved by Ecology. Actually, it's a relatively good opportunity at this point in time, because we will, critical areas within shoreline jurisdiction are still required to be regulated the same way as critical areas outside shoreline jurisdiction, so it's an opportunity for us to actually bring these two processes together. Ecology does have responsibility over reviewing wetlands, for instance, so it'll actually put the critical areas piece before the shoreline piece. We'll amend, what was that, conformance amendment attached to the shoreline master program previously?
Yeah.
And then they'll come back together as a package when the SMP is ready to be approved by Ecology.
That will dovetail in time pretty well. Okay, it would be really good for me to understand as we move through. I'm supportive of at least attempting to keep this in the council. I feel a little dubious about it. I have to say about the amount of effort, that is not reflected in the agenda memo that I think may come to pass, but we'll see. So, it'd be good for me to know, as we move forward, how, how things interact with the recommended and approved SMP that's sitting at Ecology right now, and if there's conflicts and how that, you know, because we'll need to understand that, and I don't remember all that much about what we did on the SMP. Do we have critical aquifer recharge areas in Bellevue?
We looked, we have wells, some wells in Bellevue, both city wells, and then there's a private well system in Hilltop, which was annexed.
Is that the same, as a?
What we found when we looked at this was, for instance, King County, where Hilltop was previously, did not identify that as a critical aquifer recharge area. So the plan at this point is likely to say, well, the circumstances haven't changed as a result of the annexation, so because that wasn't designated before, the likelihood is we won't designate it in the future, and our, our, our hope is, is that we can essentially identify the wellhead protection plan under state law as the mechanism to appropriately govern critical aquifer recharge areas in the city, because we have so few wells.
Because we're not sure if we even have an aquifer recharger.
We have so few wells, and they're in areas of very low land use, land use intensity.
So, okay, so on the narrowly tailored, it would be really good for, when this comes to us, to have a very good explanation with citations of which is mandatory, because if there's any discretion in there, we need to know, and we need to know when there's no discretion. And if there is discretion, what the breadth of that discretion is. So that's going to be important, as well as legal analysis of that, whether it's mandatory or discretionary, or how much discretion. And then, one of the things I'm going to be looking for is a practical analysis of how any of these potential changes affect the property owner.
Right.
You know, what, what impact does it have? And if we're changing, you know, ravines, you said it's going to be easier for them, this means that they have less buffer, or this means that they don't have to go through X, Y, and Z. If we're creating a lot of new processes that are going to be loading them on the backs of the property owners, we need to know that, so, so that the public can know that when it comes to pass. So that, I'm supportive of keeping it narrowly tailored, but I, I'm going to want a lot of information, since I did sit through
Yes.
...all the critical areas before, and I know how complicated it is, so that's why, you know, I'm a little nervous about whether we can actually do it on the timeframe recommended. So, thanks.
Okay. Helen?
Thanks. So, did you ask Ecology whether there was some opportunity to just get an extension to deal with this in a way that doesn't allow, cause us to lose grants, or is this really the only solution?
What we're doing is we're showing positive progress forward. So far, we have not lost grants. So, we have, for instance, completed the best available science, and we have completed, well, we are completing, and we are completing the gap analysis, and we are in conversations with Ecology about what the effect on grants are. There's approximately, I think, I had the number, 23.
Twenty-three out of 39.
Yeah, out of 39 jurisdictions that are in the same position as we are.
In King County.
In King County. So, hopefully, I mean, we're trying to get them to work with us on this.
So how long ago was it that we finished up the shoreline management plan?
It was in 20, the beginning of 2015. Or, it was in 2015, it got forwarded to the Department of Ecology in 2015.
Beginning of 2015, and so now we're a year and a half after that?
Right.
They haven't even had the public hearing yet.
So a year and a half later, we get a message from Joe Burkhart at the Department of Ecology that says, "This message is intended to give you a brief update related to Ecology's review of the city of Bellevue's locally adopted shoreline management program." And let's remember, we're the fifth largest city in the state. We have Lake Washington and Lake Sammamish. We're important in the discussion on the shoreline management plan. Ecology is in receipt of a complete submittal from the city, however, due to recent turnover and other workload challenges in our offices, we at Ecology were not able to start the public process during the spring of 2016, a year after we submitted it, and they still haven't started it. We anticipate distribution of a solicitation for public comment this fall. This will delay, delay will provide our staff the necessary time to become familiar with the city's proposal, which, oh, by the way, they got out in advance of when we adopted the proposal and made comments on it before we had a chance to adopt it, but now they don't have time for a year and a half to go look at it, while also allowing all of you the opportunity to get out and enjoy the shoreline during the remainder of the summer. Well, that's gracious. Okay? I mean, so, they don't have the time in a year and a half to look over the fifth largest city in the state's shoreline management plan that was, what, five years in the making, and that they were all along basically opining on and trying to influence, and now they somehow have time to deal with this issue? Why, how did they have time to deal with it, and how do we have time to deal with it? We're busy, they're apparently unable to get to our very important shoreline management plan in a year and a half. I'm just, I'm just mystified.
Are you, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't understand the question quite. Are you asking the question how they have time to be working on the critical areas code at the same time as they don't have time?
Right. I just don't understand why we would be required to wade into this issue when we haven't finished the full boat. They haven't even started the process of reviewing what we submitted to them supposedly, even though they've been commenting on it all along, and now we want to shift gears and go into the critical areas ordinance and make some tweaks around the margins there that they have tweaks around the margins there that they have to go and review and approve, but they don't have time to do it?
So, the Department of Commerce is actually responsible for our, our updates to our comprehensive plans and the review of the consistency for GMA purposes. So, it's actually a different body of personnel that actually do work on those two things. The, I believe, the issue with respect to Ecology is, I know that they did have some turnover, and in all fairness, after the council completed the review last spring, it took us staff some time to create the record. It was about twenty-three baker's boxes long by the time we finished it, and then, had it all bait stamped for their review. So, it did go to them towards the end of the year, and, of last year. And then, Ecology has been reviewing it since that time. They did have some turnover. We did also have some feedback from the Lakeshore St. public, that they would be frustrated if we were to have the public hearings earlier, and they actually requested that those be in the fall, the few that I did talk to, so that we didn't ruin their summer, essentially preparing for these hearings. So, it was kind of a balanced approach to workload management, and that was the outcome.
So, I think, and what was mentioned, we are in regular conversations with Ecology about advancing the work and trying to coordinate it in a way that makes sense for the public and for the city, and obviously, they're struggling a bit, as you've read in that email from Joe Burkhart. It is, under the state statutes, our obligation to follow the GMA requirements, and this is just one small piece of that, in addition to the comprehensive plan and the other development regulations. So, I think, as Carol mentioned, we're showing progress to advance this. We're doing it in a narrow way. We think that makes sense, based on kind of where we are with our environmental regulations, and trying to, and looking at the workload that the council, the commissions, and staff are dealing with right now, that this seems to make sense, from just, you know, getting done what we need to get done. If there are other things that come from the conversation about the Critical Areas Update, that are changes that the council or the community would like us to explore further, we can incorporate those into a future work plan conversation, and then bring those forward as a separate project, under a separate project. But I understand your frustration.
Yeah, and what I mean, it's, I guess what's frustrating about it is, we have an amazing workload that involves the Planning Commission and the planning staff and the council on a myriad of issues that our constituents want us to address, that don't require the input of an organization that tells us eighteen months after we approve something that they still haven't gotten around to reviewing it. And so, you know, that's what's frustrating to me. If we're going to start diving into this issue, I think it'd be good to have some assurances from Ecology that they will actually take it up if we get it done. And I think, as far as, you know, tweaks around the margins, and when we talk about tweaks around the margins, it makes me think about the downtown livability study, which was presented as such, and we still haven't got that done. So, I'm not exactly eager to do this, because I don't see it going as a, just a check-the-box thing. Critical areas ordinance and downtown livability studies and shoreline management plans, I've learned, are usually not like that.
Seems like it.
So, I know, I just want to register my concern. If we're going to go down this path, it's good to preserve the grant eligibility if it's really necessary to do this, but we have a lot on the plate, particularly in this department, and I just would rather we didn't get into this if we didn't have to.
So, what's your sense about that, Mike, in terms of how we could juggle this?
Well, that's the challenge with, as Councilmember Wallace mentioned, there are a lot of things on our collective plates, I guess. That's why we gave this a lot of thought in how to integrate this work in, in a way that we think we can accomplish it with a fairly narrow scope, and trying to keep it on, on that track, recognizing that, you know, inevitable surprises pop up with these regulatory changes that we're advancing. It is a concern, obviously, that the state has in the background the authority to impact us financially, and we want to protect against that. We think that's good financial stewardship on our part, so we want to be taking those steps that we think are appropriate to protect our eligibility for state funding, for things that are important to the city as well. They haven't threatened to use that tool, but that exists, and so, we need to be conscious of that. Like I said, we do stay in close contact with Ecology, recognizing they have some work to get done for us. I agree. That has been a long process that we'd all like to see come to a conclusion, so.
Yeah, Brad?
I was thinking after hearing the comments, I was wondering if it makes some sense that we heard some of the concerns on the council members in terms of the timing, complexity, would it make sense for the staff to have rapportance with the council in terms of the status of how this is going, so that we monitor it from that perspective? We could certainly do that.
Can I ask a question? So, to that end, I assume, I guess, there's more question or comment to my colleagues. If it is looking really complicated, I guess I'm just going to go on record to say, I reserve the right to recommend that we send it to the Planning Commission if it, we just don't have the time, we have a lot on our agenda. And if it is more complicated, as I suspect it may be, I may be advocating for that later, but I'm willing to start with it at least this way.
Well, I think that's something we can look at. I'm not sure just automatically sending the planning commission's necessary, the thing. They're, they get bogged down, too.
No, I'm saying, let's start, but...
Somehow, yeah, somewhere, and you would come back to us if it gets complicated, and suggest another route, and make sure we keep communication with the state. And as you said, if we're, if we were by ourselves, I think it'd be even more frightening, but since we're not, the likelihood of them coming in and telling, how many cities you said?
Twenty-three.
Yes.
That we're aware.
Affecting their projects, I think they would, that would be a problem. So, we have, it sounds like we have some way to maneuver in this. And taking into account the cautions and all, I think we can go forward on it. I really, at this stage, would hope we don't, and I appreciate not sending it right to the Planning Commission. Maybe later, they'll be in better shape to work on this, so we can have that as a possibility. Anybody else who hasn't, we don't have to talk just to time then, if you have something that you'll add, that would be great, because we're running up to the end of the period here.
Do you want a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I would move that the council direct staff to do a narrowly tailored code amendment to the Critical Areas overlay that is aimed at maintaining the city's development requirements with GMA, and advance the code package to the city council for public hearing. This process path is necessary in order to accomplish the mandated CAO update as quickly as possible to maintain grant eligibility.
Okay.
And I think that's pretty much what was in the packet, but I think we've heard tonight if, that this has got to be narrow, it's got to be as much of check-the-box as possible. We do need to hear from the public, but it is really aimed at making sure that we are in compliance, and that we really need to be very careful about any changes that are made, to be able to state how those changes will affect both property owners and the environment, the critical area.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. No more comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have around ten minutes left. If you'd like, we have a couple items under the manager's report, and we could cover one now, if you'd like. So, we have, under the manager's report, we had two items to report on, and it's the announcement of two awards. Two awards for the city's Fleet and Communications Division, and these awards were in recognition of the division's high performance. I wanted to call up Lori Leland, who is the Civic Services Department's Assistant Director, to provide an overview. Well, here comes some of the staff, too, all the staff, actually. Our folks coming in actually work in our fleet shop. Hello, everyone?
Thank you, Brad.
And so, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you, Lori, to explain what some of the rewards were and what they mean.
Terrific. Good evening, Mayor Stokes and council members. As you're aware, the city has a pretty significant investment in the city's fleet and equipment. And frontline operating departments, such as police and fire, development services, utilities, transportation, and parks, rely heavily on the fleet for frontline services to citizens, as well as emergency response. And the Fleet and Communications Division, some of them are represented behind me, are part of the Civic Services Department, and it's their job to manage and maintain that fleet. So, that's what brings me here this evening, is to share some good news with you. The first is the announcement that the City of Bellevue's fleet has been recognized with a number seven ranking among the hundred best fleets in North America.
Wow, that's pretty good.
For background, the city's fleet has actually ranked previously in the 100 best. In fact, we've done it for the last six years, but the number seven ranking is our highest to date. So, our last previous ranking was number 12. So, that really says something about continuous improvement. The honor with the number seven ranking is sponsored by the National Association of Fleet Administrators, and it's given to fleets that demonstrate continued commitment to providing quality equipment and competitive pricing and good maintenance service to customers. And they also look at how the fleet management does this in an economic, environmentally-friendly, and efficient manner. And I should point out that that award is bestowed on fleets regardless of their size. And in Bellevue, our fleet is considered midsize. So, the reason I point that out is, the second achievement that I'd like to share with you tonight is that the City of Bellevue's fleet has been honored with another award, and it's a number one ranking of midsize fleets in North America.
All right. Yay!
Thank you. This honor, the number one ranking, recognizes top-performing public sector fleets based on their size, and is sponsored by the American Public Works Association, which you're familiar with. They do accreditation for our utilities and transportation departments, so it's quite an accomplishment. To give you a little more context to both awards, there are over forty thousand government fleets in North America. So, to be ranked among the best is quite an honor. In both cases, a panel of industry experts evaluated fleets based on a variety of factors, including things like resource stewardship turnaround times, maintenance quality, technology implementation, and even organizational culture, which I find very interesting. Before I conclude, I'd like to introduce some of the folks behind me, particularly our Fleet and Communications Management Team. So, among them, if you gentlemen would stand when I say your name, that'd be great. Oh, they're just going to stand. Pat Spencer, Dmitri Bergeron, Sean Pannell, and Tom Wall. And the reason I point them out specifically is, they and their staff are those that are responsible for these results, so they really deserve all the credit. And we're proud to share the news of these with you, because they're quite significant, and also because they really underscore and highlight the division's commitment to high-performance leadership and stewardship. So, thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Seater.
Kindness.
Hard work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Fantastic. Okay?
We'll do the second one in.
Yeah, okay, all right. See everybody in there in five minutes.
Yeah. We're adjourned.
We're adjourned.
Oh, I guess I should...